Okay, we're good to go.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee back up. Order. Let the minute taker reflect at the same members as present. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like to take it away?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was kind of getting into the Roden Bridge MFT funding. So, to the mayor's question about the bridge project, you know, the Roden Bridge fund funding and/or the MFT funding would be available to be used on the bridge project should the SDP funding not come through and/or there be other issues with the capital fund. At the same time, staff has identified a project that's probably one to three years out that the MFT funding could be used on as well, depending on the timing and a couple of other factors. So, there is a plan in place for the MFT fund going forward as of now.
Mayor, please. Sorry, Art. Brad, and for the revenues, last year we came up with $495. You went up to $510. We had budgeted $355, but again, I'm guessing because of the new taxes, started January, that's why we got to $495. If we ended up with an extra $140,000 for six months, wouldn't that number be even higher or you're just being conservative? I take it, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so, we ran that through, I believe it was based on the state's fiscal year, which is July. So, if it's July, that's really 10 months, right? July to April for us, so you just miss a May and June. And so then, the number, the $510 was based on the IML guidance, again, as all the state revenues are.
Okay.
And so they had a number for the traditional MFT and then the capital bill figure as well, and then we added those together. So, that's based on the IML guidance for both of those numbers.
All right.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, I have one question. So, correct me if I'm wrong, so last year or this year, we spent $55,000 for salt, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, that is the estimated spend for this fiscal year, correct.
Good, so why were we up at $65? Because I'm sure we're going to have a lot left over. Someone can answer that?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, I think a lot of it is based upon the price that we got or are expecting to get via the bid through the county, and then we still have the, kind of the plus or minus that we have to take. And so, I believe that number is kind of the high end of what we could possibly take. So, you remember a few years ago where we kind of had to go over that, we had to do the budget amendment, whatnot? So, that's based on the high number, the high end of what we would be able to take should we need to. I think we're all kind of in agreement that we'll, I guess, hopefully have quite a bit left over from this year. I don't know if Mr. Lang wants to comment any more on that, but basically that would be the high end of the spend based on the estimated cost for salt for next year.
I'm sorry. Could someone just tell me how much they charge us to store whatever we don't use?
Mr. Wilson, do we have that number?
You could do it next meeting.
Or we could get it back, get back to you.
Yeah, that's, you could do that.
Director Lang, do you have the answer?
Yeah, so the contractor doesn't actually charge us to store it. If we don't meet the required amount that we're required to purchase, they store it for free and we get it at this contracted price next year.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Jacob?
Brad, just ask a question that I called you about earlier. So, just, we transferred $40,000 from here to the Capital Projects Fund. If you could maybe just explain why that was done?
Sure.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so that was the fiscal year that we're in currently, and that was for the street sufficiency study that was completed. And so, we try to, again, take all things street related, you know, out of the Capital Projects Fund, and since this would be an eligible expense out of the MFT fund, we did transfer that in there for that cost. An alternative to that would have just been to have expensed it straight out of the MFT fund, and it would have wound up the same. But again, just from a standpoint of trying to have all of those capital costs, capital eligible costs in one place, that's why we account for it all out of the Capital Projects Fund.
Okay, next.
Sure, moving on to tourism. High level, there is a not recommended expanded level item in here. That would be the holiday decorations. So, the decreasing contractuals related to the dileride van, some maintenance fuel line items, the decrease in interfund transfers, that $50,000 was the transfer that was going to the Capital Project, and that was the tourism portion of the White Oaks payment that had been in the last two years. You recall when we had the conversations about the White Oak Park conversation?
Correct.
There was some want for part of that to come out of tourism, and so that $50,000 was that amount, or the $50,000 out of the tourism fund. The $250,000 has been the static amount transferred to the general fund for the past couple of years. The increase in other largely due to the increase in special events, the extra concerts, the extra, I guess, extra big name band at the fest. There's a couple of odds and ends. And there's just one quick item, the student essay contest you might have known was set to zero this year. The Chamber of Commerce, through their strategic planning process, has decided to suspend that program, and so, since they're not doing it, there'd be no need to expend any funds, so that's why we set that to zero. So, that's not a mistake that was purposeful based upon the Chamber of Commerce.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The Memorial Day Veterans Memorial, I would not do anything with that. There's no one?
Mr. Wilson?
Is that the parade or is that the veterans' party?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. So, that line item historically had been for the bricks, the purchase and sale of the bricks. And so, but that's, money's just in and out, so we take the money in for the brick and then we pay the vendor. So, it's really supposed to be a zero sum, so that's why it's zero in there.
Alderman Jacob, do you have a question?
This is more of a question on the red sheet. Not quite sure why we wouldn't approve this. This is tourism. You want to bring people into town, so we're doing all these special events. This is to make a new part of town to attract people. You could go into Rosemont and I'll tell you, there's a line of cars there that go there for the holidays just to see the Christmas decorations. You could go into Skokie, same thing. There's other towns I could tell you. So, this is not coming out of taxpayers, this is coming from hotel tax. This is for tourism. Why wouldn't we want people coming to see the corner of Wooddale Road here in Irving with some nice holiday decorations and get people to go to some of our restaurants, go to our stores while they're here? So, I'm not quite sure why we would say no to this.
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, when we initially talked about the clock tower, one of the neat things about the clock tower that the council decided to do was kind of make the clock tower itself be able to be customized for certain holidays. So, we do have the red and green or the blue for our Christmas decor on the actual lights on the clock tower. In addition, we already do add a significant amount of lights to that area in-house. The lion's share of this cost was these big grandiose, kind of like our snowflake that we have outside City Hall. So, from my perspective, I just didn't think that much of a cost was warranted for holiday lights when the area is already lit. That's my perspective, but you guys are the ones that make the call, so it's up to you guys.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
First of all, I really thought what we did this year for the clock tower area, I thought was great. Heard the feedback, we put the colored lights up there. I had no problem, no complaints about that. To spend $65,000 for Christmas decorations for one time a year, I have a hard time swallowing that as a budget. That special event, I understand it's out of Tourism Fund. Man, I could do a lot more with the Tourism Fund, and I could build that fest even higher. I could do more fireworks. I could do a lot more that brings people in this town. You think people are going to come in this town because we put $65,000 more on Christmas lights? I don't think so. Mine's a no vote.
Yeah, so, like, pair, like, feeding off of it.
Do you want me to pass, pass you and come back to you?
Well, I just, just to add one quick thing is, some of the feedback I always got was people coming through the train, so coming through Wooddale on the train. For good or bad, that clock tower is getting a lot of good comments out there about the city. We upped our game. I did a tenant session at IMRF, and I did bring back a vendor two years ago that actually said, "We can, we can up our game." The positive is, we should do it. The negative is, we don't have a defined space for downtown yet. So, this might be a little premature, although that clock tower and that area where people are cutting through is really our only shot. The train station, clock tower, to get people to get off, to want to come back, get off on the train, grab drinks, bring families down here, I just think it's a little premature today.
Mayor, please.
$60,000 a year, I mean, we've got a lot of needs throughout the city. A lot more beautification needs to be done, and we're definitely moving in the right direction. But, like, we bought the one snowflake. I can tell you, I've seen people pulled over, taking photos with their kids in front of that snowflake, even when we have the tree lighting, all kinds of, so maybe for the next five years, we buy another piece and find out how we can strategically place them, maybe by the clock tower or whatnot, and buy one piece, because that one piece, I believe, cost us about $5,500, was it? And we have it for years to come that we can reuse. And I think we've put some money in here already for that. Is that correct?
Mr. Murmurs?
We do budget for holiday lights every year. This is an expansion over that. So, we do kind of step up our game with more lights, but these are the big ticket, grandiose type items.
But if we wanted to buy just another-
Another snowflake or something?
Another piece this coming year, right? So, we have, next year we'll have two, right? And maybe they're both by City Hall, or we put one of the, you know?
Mr. Murmurs?
I would also note that while it is out of the Tourism Fund, as you know, recent legislation that we lobbied for did get passed, and we have the ability now to use money from the fund on items that aren't necessarily tourism. So, the $65,000 could theoretically, I haven't worked out the percentage, but you're right, 25% of the fund is unrestricted. So, we shouldn't just spend things, just to spend it just because it's in tourism with that change in legislation.
Alderman Jacob?
Well, I think, just, you know, I know the mayor said the snowflake, I think what Alderman Messina and I brought back, that company that we recommended, I mean, they weren't doing a grandiose snowflake, I mean, they were-
They were building a gingerbread house.
I mean, they were making, I mean, again, if anyone's driven through Rosemont, I mean, people go there to see it. It brings tour, it brings people, it brings people for the holidays to your town. So, I, I mean, maybe a snowflake might be the answer, maybe Alderman Messina is correct, it might be too early, but maybe an extra snowflake would help.
I think it's going to take a lot more than $65,000. That's what I think, so, I like the mayor's plan.
Well, to jump in, I think part of the issue is, so, the $65,000 wouldn't be a bad idea if we actually had a game plan with the rest of downtown and the area. We talked about putting skating rink or something, hot house, bringing vendors, doing other things. If we did that and were decorating, combined a couple different things to attract the people, I would agree 100%, then the $65,000 is going to be worth every cent we pay. Being that we're still trying to figure out all those pieces and how they go together, it'd probably be better if just continued down the road and buy one or two snowflakes a year and disperse them throughout town by the memorial or town center or whatever areas, over by the school, the corner across the street. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of buying two to step that program up, so that's $10,000 or $11,000 versus the $65,000 on top of the, our regular budget. Mayor, please.
Yeah, so, how much money do we have in, we usually, we used to do about $10,000 or $15,000. I see seasonal decorations, but that's not it. Thought we had a separate line item. We used to, correct, Brad?
Seasonal decorations.
Is that it? So, it's 20, we're at $25,000?
Correct.
So, we could get a couple. Let's face it, Alderman Messina even said it, we're in transition, we got the, within a couple of months, probably have construction happening right next door, maybe at the end of the year, if things go good, we could have across the street as well, right? But, it's still transition. And Alderman Woods just mentioned a skating rink, so, I could tell you, that came up quite a few times already. We've had, we had about four or five community involvement committee meetings, and I know Alderman Sismarcy's not here, but he had brought that up years ago, we just weren't ready. But, maybe now we're getting closer to that point where we might have to, those might become another event type situation or whatnot, and maybe work with the Park District somehow.
So, do we want to add to the budget to buy one or two snowflakes? But is the 20 already covering what we're doing?
No.
Mr. Murmurs or Mr. Wilson, whoever wants to take that?
Well, I think, Mr. Lang, I asked him, he says we save the lights now because they're LEDs, we reuse them. So, before, years ago, they used to just cut them down and buy new ones every year, and we don't do that anymore. So, we probably could get a couple pieces.
Yeah, correct. We make every attempt to save the lighting from year to year. Every given year, we have to buy, you know, a few more boxes of lights if some aren't working or we want to add some, some lights to some different areas. These big ticket items that you're seeing, they range in price anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000, depending on the size. So, I mean, we may have enough in the budget to buy a couple this year along with our, the lights that we need, but anything beyond that, we would need to expand the budget.
Well, we got $25,000 in there. But we don't have to do it all in one year. Yeah. We're good, we're good. The manager's shaking his head yes.
This is, this is just a logistics thing, but can we use a little creativity when we, whatever amount we give you, can we do something like an ornament or-
It's 25.
Not that we're near a body of water, but I saw another city that had this big oversized under rock chair that was lit up, that was awesome. To the mayor's point, you want to have something unique that people will want to take a picture in front of them. So, can we use a little creativity? That's why I gave you guys that company, because if we don't have it, they were willing to do it, and I think it was no cost for the drawings and renderings and stuff.
Maybe we can present a couple different options and-
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. Or we can just-
Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
Put the Grinch up, maybe? I don't know.
No Grinch, no Grinch.
Mr. Murmurs, you were showing us something with the clock tower. Could you go back like a slide? Wait, back to the clock tower. You said our clock tower does that already with the lights like that? Because I don't recall seeing that.
I mean, the LED panels, the LED panels.
For Christmas time or different holidays, we make the colors sync with the holiday, with like a little holiday show.
Okay, yeah, that's what I saw, I was gonna say, I did not see anything like that. Okay. I thought you said it was, had the ability to do that.
Okay, so, would we add any more or what do we just?
No, we're, we have $25,000.
Sure, thank you. Moving on, Narcotics Forfeiture Fund. This is, yeah, they count for the K-9 unit, seizure forfeited drug money. Next fund is TIF District 1, the Thorndale Corridor. So, as you're aware, you know, we did purchase the property to work on the Public Works facility, so that interfund transfer of $1 million is to go into the CIP for the architect, CM, to start working on transforming 790 into the new Public Works campus. And then, the other money in contractual is kind of the as needed engineering items or something along those lines that might come up throughout the year.
Mayor, please.
Brad, I think it was what, two weeks ago, the fire department was here, and we're going to chip in with the new ambulance, and we're giving $150,000 from the TIF. That's not in here yet, is it?
Mr. Wilson?
It is not. This was produced before that, so-
That's what I figured, okay.
That'll be in the final, final version.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. TIF District 2, which is the Wooddale Commercial TIF District, so, right next door. The monies in here, this 2.9 million, are monies associated with the TIF funding that was approved a number of months ago with the RDA, with the developer, to construct the project next door, and then also the preliminary bond interest payments on the debt, so. General Capital Projects Fund, again, we went through the CIP, I believe it was January 9th. So, the figures presented in here included those changes. We did, like I mentioned, roll a couple of things into the road program, the striping whatnot. Otherwise, the lights were taken out, but that wasn't in the current year. And the only thing that I believe got pulled into the current year was the Veterans Memorial, the $75,000 for the Veterans Memorial. That did get pulled up and placed into fiscal year '21. Otherwise, everything else was as presented on January 9th.
Yeah, when we were on the tourism fund, and we talked about this again earlier today, and I forgot to ask this, so we transferred $50,000 to this fund, correct, from the tourism?
The current fiscal year, correct, and the previous one, correct.
Okay, and then, could you just explain what that was for?
Oh, sure. That was the tourism's contribution portion for the White Oaks Park agreement that the city struck with the Park District.
Mayor, please.
Brad, page 90. Sorry. Page 92, TIF 1, $1 million to the Capital Projects. Is that for the engineering costs?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, yes, for the architects' costs and the construction management costs to start the design and, you know, soil borings, phase one environmental investigation, stuff like that.
Right, okay, okay. I just want to make sure I got it right, that's all. Okay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Is that $1 million for both buildings? Or is that just for one? The design and-
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, I believe the, the design contract was going to be to redevelop the 790 site and then also the work on the current 720 building, kind of, but it's going to be phased, obviously we have to move out of 720 before we can do work on 720, but, yeah, it would be an all encompassing architectural review of the project.
Mayor, please.
Brad, going to page 93, I got a couple right here. So, strategic plan, $754,000. What, refresh my, I'm sorry, refresh my memory on that. Where, do you know what it is?
Mr. Murmurs?
That's for all the bacon we purchased that morning when we did the planning, all the trays.
Okay.
Was that for the strategic planning?
Just for that session, yeah.
Right, that then led into the CIP, which then programmed into here, so we've discussed this already a couple of times? Okay, just wanted to put it in perspective.
That's for projects.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, not going to list the amounts, but the projects that are included in the strategic plan citywide, project scope are the facade improvement program, ERP, O'Hare noise, rear yard drainage, and some work at the metro station.
So, that's why, that was my next question, that's why we have a zero on facade program and stuff.
Correct, so it got rolled into the, into there, yes.
Brad, could you repeat exactly?
So, the $754,000 in that strategic plan line item consists of monies for the facade improvement program, the ERP system, the upgrades, O'Hare noise, which is largely the JDA costs, rear yard drainage program, and then the work at the metro parking lot that was discussed, like the resurfacing, restriping, or-
And-
Mayor, please.
And then economic development, we've doubled it.
Sure, so that includes, really, the biggest part of the jump in that is the interest in some principal payments on the line of credit. And obviously, as things sell, that's going to go away a little bit more of a rapid fashion. And then also, another significant increase is the UDO rewrite that was approved a couple of meetings ago with Esco.
Alderman Jacob?
Alderman Wesley asked us, but here it says wastewater treatment plant, Veterans Memorial, zero, but I thought we said we were going to put money and do that. Add this on page 93.
Yeah. Correct, that was rolled into it. I don't have the final draft in front of me, but it's, it's either in there or it's in the water section, so, it did get rolled in there, though.
Yeah.
Okay, it is, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't remember specifically where it got placed, but it is, it is in there.
Next.
Land acquisition. As we're sitting here tonight, do not foresee any land purchases during the next fiscal year. Phrase on that. And obviously, if it did, it would have to come back to council and get vetted through a council meeting to purchase land.
Next.
Commuter parking lot, really the only significant change is that interfund transfer out to the CIP. Again, as we just mentioned and discussed on the 9th, there would be some, you know, perhaps some patching work, some seal coating, restriping, other work with those little grassy islands, plantings, some other exterior type of work over there. I don't remember the entire scope, but kind of spruce it up and try to, you know, keep it looking how we want it to be looking over there.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, Brad, so, this fund has 1.2, over 1.2 million dollars in it, and I know we probably did that, didn't we do the train station about eight years ago or something? So, shelf life is probably about 15 years before we, I don't remember how much we paid for that back then, I don't know if you do. I'm just curious, are we carrying a real excess in this fund or what?
Mr. Wilson?
So, remember about two hours ago, we said there's a difference between fund balance and cash balance? In the enterprise funds, the assets of the fund are rolled into the net position of it, so, there is not 1.2 million dollars in cash in the metro fund. There's about $80,000 in cash in the metro fund. The other 1.1, 1.2 million is actually the value of the building that was constructed. So, yeah, no, we're not carrying a cash balance of 1.2, 1.3 million, that's.
I found that to be kind of high, and I'm like, I don't remember that being, okay.
No, correct, yeah. So, that, the, in the enterprise funds, the assets are rolled into the ending net position, so that does include the value of the land and the building itself. So, that's why that number is significantly higher. Then we get to the water fund, we really don't have 30 to 40 million dollars in cash in the water fund, that's all the assets of the water fund, correct, yeah.
This is accounting. Alderman Jacob?
The 12, for that 12,000, it says includes contractual plowing and painting of interior. I thought we already painted the interior just last year.
Mr. Wilson?
You know, I believe we did, but that doesn't mean that something couldn't happen, that couldn't facilitate the need to do it. I don't know, you know, if it, you could have an event downtown and it gets kind of rowdy in there and they mess up the walls, and then we're going to have to go in and fix them up. So, we leave some money in there just for those types of maintenance items, just should they come up. And that contractual plowing, that's what the manager alluded to, was we had one snowstorm six years ago that we couldn't keep up, so we plopped some money in there each year and, you know, fortunately, we haven't had to tap that, but again, that's monies that's in there as a contingency should we get a snowmageddon again, and then also, should we need to refresh it based upon just some unforeseen event occurring inside the train station.
Excellent, next.
Sanitation fund. This is really just money in, money out. The increase in contractual is just the increase in the contract. You know, again, we're holding the rate to the residence level this year, and as has been stated in previous discussions, we're still be, being charged less at the end of the five years than we were at the end of the previous contract. So, again, this is just money in, money out. We build the residence, we pay the bill.
Alderman Jacob, you had a question? I feed you to it.
I actually did. We, we just recently changed the credit card processing, the way we're doing the fees on that. Was that taken into account with the $6,500 here or?
Mr. Wilson?
So, the majority of the fees for the credit card, if you kind of break it out, prorata, go to the water fund. So, that number might change a little bit? Well, actually, no, it's not going to change at all. at all.
Right.
Because it's still, the, the transaction fees are still roughly the same, it's just what our credit is, we're going to go from the one dollar to the two dollars. And again, that's going to really get attributed to the water fund. So, yeah, no, that number's going to stay largely the same.
Okay, Mayor, please, you had a question?
Yeah, Brad, on this interfund transfer for general fund, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, was this part of the, wasn't this together with the water transfer? When we used to do six hundred and eighty-eight, it was all together, I thought back then, now it's separated, so technically now we're transferring seven hundred and forty thousand, went up?
Mr. Wilson?
So, the sanitation fund had previously had a transfer of its own back to the general fund.
Besides the six eighty-eight? I thought it was all together back then.
No, it was fifty thousand and the six eighty-eight, so it's still the same number if you add them together, or it should be the same number when you add them together.
Okay.
Yeah, the sanitation fund had its own, it's now blended in with, with that transfer from the water fund that got moved over.
Next?
So, the water and sewer capital projects fund, this is the fund that actually got closed, just from an accounting standpoint, the funding source of this was the water and sewer fund, so it didn't make a whole lot of sense from an accounting standpoint with the new ERP coming online to continue that. So, what we did was we created a capital division within the water and sewer operating fund, so it's going to look and feel exactly the same as it did before from a CIP and a, and a project standpoint, it's just changing just kind of where the accounting of it's done. It's actually going to make it easier during the audit process as well to close these out and capitalize them, so it's a, a good change.
Next?
Sure. Water and sewer fund, summary of revenues. The increase, charges for services is the, the rates, the rate increases that were passed that again, the residents are going to see on their bills here in the next couple of days when they get them in the mail. And, you know, so the, the net effect of the increase was about fifteen percent, so that's why you'll see it going, I believe if you go into the detail, the revenue was about seven point nine, so, you know, eight million, fifteen percent of that's one point two, but it was a little less than that, so that's where the million dollar increase came in, just kind of trying to right-size that increase based on the way the rates were adjusted. And then, yeah, reduce the tap-on and connection fees, we do have a lot, you know, as mentioned earlier, a lot of building coming online or whatnot, but those are, a lot of times, those bigger buildings are just one fee, which is good, but, you know, you get a lot more tap-on fees if there's multiple buildings coming online, so, a multiple like ten, twelve, fifteen, like a new subdivision or something like that. So we did drop that down because there's, again, the buildings, but not, not a, not a significant volume number-wise.
Mayor, please.
Brad, so, we still have the video gaming in here, correct? So we can correct this water fund still?
Yes.
Okay.
Next?
On the expense side? So utilities is up a little bit, a lot of that is due to that contractual services line item, which there was some required SCADA work that has to be done, and then, I guess there's a regulatory system resiliency test that needs to be performed this year. So those weren't expendable items because they're mandatory, so we had no choice, so we just programmed them right in. And then, in the utilities, the interfund transfer was eliminated, again, since the water and sewer capital fund isn't there, we removed that transfer since all the funding is just going to stay within the operating fund as it is.
Mayor, please.
Are we in the public utilities division right now?
One-ten?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I don't know why my numbers don't match on that personnel. Oh, no, no, I got it. Sorry, Brad. Yeah, one oh-nine, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, Brad.
Next? Oh, hold on a second, Alderman Jacob?
Could you refresh my memory, the system resiliency test, what is that exactly?
I will defer to Mr. Lang.
Mr. Lang, you want to?
Yeah, so the risk and resiliency assessment is required by the American Water Infrastructure Act, all utilities that serve more than three thousand residents are required to perform it, our deadline is by next June, so it has to be completed within this fiscal year.
Next?
Okay. Sure, so moving on to the wastewater fund, that's page, the narrative begins on page one-eleven, and the numbers are on one-thirteen. The contractual service related, and the commodities are both related to plant maintenance. There's some stuff, believe it or not, a large percentage of the plant is already, what, seven years old? Doesn't seem like it's been that long. So there's some parts and some components of it that need to be replaced, or, you know, have some deep cleaning, whatever, and Mr. Corelli's done a great job of identifying those and getting those programmed in to make sure that the treatment plant's running as efficiently as it should be. You know, again, the principal and interest payments, one goes up, one goes down, it's a teeter-totter, but the payments themselves are generally level, and the, the interfund transfer went up a little bit due to SURF, and then? One thirteen.
One thirteen, instead of said, yeah.
And there was an increase in transfer to SURF a little bit, and then also for the facility manager, which as of now is still there, but could come out.
Mayor, please.
Sorry, Brad, so, with the wastewater, I take it the south treatment plant, eventually it's going to come out of here or capital projects? Because I know we're looking to put money away every year, so we don't have to take out a loan on this second plant, is that going in here somewhere? Because I don't, I don't seem to catch that here. Or is it still in the capital projects?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, so ultimately, the funding from an accounting standpoint would be the capital tab a couple away.
Okay.
But, yeah, you are correct, so part of the, the rate increase was liquidity and then also to start building up a reserve for the, the work on the south plant.
So we shouldn't move it into this fund as a line item, or? No?
Mr. Wilson?
So what we were planning on doing, which we could do it that way, too, if you wanted to, was through the audit and through a net asset, there's a process whereby we can air-mark money for future projects.
Okay.
So it would be just, we would be either assigning or committing, depending on how formal the council would want to be with that. We could do an air-mark on the fund balance of the net asset reserve through the audit process.
Alderman Jacob?
On the, on the expenses here, I see we have money put aside, four thousand dollars for education and training, but it seems like we're, we've, the most we've ever spent was fifteen hundred, eighteen dollars, is there a reason we keep putting four thousand? Budgeting four thousand for that, is there some new training coming out?
For a full year, and we can send them off.
That works.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'm really shocked at all this overtime. Thirty-five Gs for overtime? Wastewater department? Is that really true, thirty-five thousand?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you know, it went from twenty-one and then up to thirty-six, this year it's trending out about thirty-two, and then there was some, you know, salary increases, thirty-five seems, seemed about right.
What's overtime for?
I would have to defer, yeah.
Please get back with me on that.
Work to get done during the regular day?
Well, I'm just saying.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, so, so this, this kind of goes up, Alderman Wesley and I were talking about this, I'm going to make a general comment, so apologies in advance, but this is a prime example of where we're doing descriptive reporting. This to me is reporting, this does nothing to tell me where are we spending our money, what are these people doing, what are these people going to do, so if we forecast, I'm going to make a general comment, please, I personally will support anything you need to get better, I don't need descriptive after the fact. After the fact telling me that we are, we spent thirty-five thousand dollars? Well, in my company, I know I'd get fired if I spent, if I, if I spent thirty-five thousand and I didn't have the wherewithal to forecast and come to you with budget ahead of time and ask for a headcount. So to me, I, we need to bring that mentality here, so I'm hoping in the future, you guys can really sort out, what, what are they doing? I don't, if there's overtime, there needs to be, I would hope, a line item or a description of, they're plowing snow, they're doing X, they're doing Y, they're doing Z, because I'd be held accountable with that thirty-five thousand dollars if I have my people working and I couldn't explain what they're doing, where I, where the thirty-five thousand went?
Brad's going to?
Well, I don't want a generic answer, if you don't, if you guys don't have it, I'd rather not hear what they maybe were doing, but go ahead.
Mr. Murmas, do you have a non-genetic answer?
Well, it's literally, I mean, we have overtime budgeted in every single account, it's not for public works, and we have overtime police every single year, and it's the same expenses every single year.
We're in twenty-twenty, we're, cities are beyond, I'm meaning?
We're not beyond overtime and we never will be, that's a fallacy.
We're beyond descriptive reporting, this is descriptive after the fact, this is, here's the chaos and here's the beauty, and you throw it on paper, but I hear nothing about how are we going to forecast in the future to say, how do we get ahead of, so this thirty-five thousand dollars maybe becomes ten thousand next year because we planned ahead? That's my question.
We can't control the weather for snowstorms, for example, for overtime for that, how would we predict that?
Okay, is it, is that what you're saying, then? Do we?
No, I'm saying it's, it's, we have overtime every year and you're never going to be able to eliminate overtime costs.
As an analytics guy, I'm a very, I'm just very frustrated, the process, because we sit here every year and we just dictate, we have surplus, we have negatives, but no one ever actually takes action on it, so it's a generic comment, I'm curious to see what we have to say, but.
And, well, I'll just throw in one comment before we go to Brett, and I get your frustration and I agree with some of the stuff, it's up to the point that, I just made this statement to Alderman Jacob, is I don't think we've had a full complement staff across all disciplines in the city in, in six years, so everybody's kind of pitching in where they can.
Wastewater, we did.
Whether, whether that's reactive issues that causes the, the overtime?
This department, we did, though. Wastewater, we did, so if we're going to a department, yeah, no, go ahead.
Brett?
Yeah, so a lot of the function of overtime is when rainstorms occur, so eventually, like where I came from, MWD, we staffed every shift, afternoons, midnights, around the clock, seven days a week, they chose to do that. What we've done in this city, which I believe is more efficient, we only staff during day shift, no one staffed on weekends, no one staffed on afternoon or midnight shift. If a rainstorm occurs during the day, existing staff can handle it. However, a lot of the processes our plan are at manual, for example, at South Plant, if we have to go into excess flow, somebody has to start the chlorine, somebody has to turn that on or we'll be in a permit violation, so a lot of it will be a function of the timing of when the rain occurs. If you get a rain on a weekend, we have to call people in, yes, sir.
Mayor, please?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Brad, no, I have a question also, sorry, Brad. So, you said the south plant, but the north plant is more automated where we can actually, right, because through the SCADA system and everything, we can actually handle that from the house and turn that stuff on, is that correct?
Well, we do have to turn the UV system on, so what happens is if we don't go into excess flow, the plant will automatically like increase pumping and, and so on, but if we have to disinfect, if it's non, so, in the summer, we have a permit where we have to disinfect May through October, so that, that's going to happen all the time, but if we go into excess flow, we do need to put disinfection on at the north plant on, that's a manual process. And then the other area that we do incur overtime, we have thirteen pump stations. Some of the times, object gets caught in there, we, we get what's called a high water alarm, the elevation goes up. If we don't call someone, we risk of flooding people out. We've had some sewer, we had seven, you know, fortunately, credit to the council, we are investing money in our collection system, but we've had seven emergency sewer failures this year. Our sewer system's getting old, we found some where they were starting to partially collapse, we had to, one of them, we had to fix on the spot, the, the risk is you would flood, we would have flooded out part of a business district, so if we can invest more into the sewer system like we're doing, get that corrected, not these emergencies, so it's a combination of pump stations, rainfall events, and like I said, this is unusual, but we identified seri, seven areas of, you know, where we had to do emergency repairs on sewers, so that was the, you know, some of the main things from the share serves.
Alderman Messina?
I guess I'll go back to my original point, maybe, maybe I'm just overstating, I mean, we're at the year twenty-twenty, do we not have IOT sensors that some of the stuff, can we not automate some of these processes? Nine o'clock, nine oh-three AM every morning in my office, when I'm sitting in my office in my house, if I'm home, I can look out and I can see that individual going to look at the lift truck. I find it very hard to believe that there's no way to, I'm not saying to automate that specific process, but I just feel like there's so many manual processes that, it's like, round up the troops, okay, we have a waterfall, right, you get this alert, I, I mean, there's got to be automation tools that exist out there, technology, sensors, something to get us to become more preventative, so it's not just, oh my God, the sewer collapsed, we had no idea, surprise. I mean, I, that's what I'm asking, I guess that's my frustration, is that we're very reactive and we just keep throwing headcount at it, and I don't think that's going to fix the problem, we eventually need to put some mathematics and science into this, and maybe this is, again, too big of a grandiose idea on my part, I just feel like we're reactive, so I'll shut up because I know it's getting like?
Brett?
Yeah, I think the point's well taken, so when we do look to do the south plant, I mean, that plant hasn't really been touched in decades, we would look to do automation on that so that, you know, you know, we could look to minimize people getting called in, you know, objects in the sewers that get caught in the pumps, we could look at screening systems that maybe can catch that, like some of the plants where I came from, we had screening systems where we, core screens that automate, I'm sorry, and we, you know, we have not invested that in this town, but I mean, it's, you know, there would be some economic analysis, capital investment versus the cost of the overtime.
City of Bryan, Texas is doing, City of Austin, Texas, I'll give you use cases to look at, I agree, there's an investment, but people are doing it, small cities and big cities, but long-term, as we think about the viability of the city, long-term, that's what I'm thinking, but.
We totally understand.
Alderman Jacob?
And I, I think the point Alderman Messina here is making is, all these different departments and not to pick on yours, I mean, we got the police chief sitting next to you, I mean, if we? We're going to pick on the police chief.
All right.
So, we should, if, if we're spending X amount of overtime, we should be able to say, okay, twenty percent of it went to the Prairie Fest, because we had overtime for the Prairie Fest, we should have some kind of breakdown somewhere of telling us where some of the overtime goes. I don't see why that would be so difficult.
Mr. Murmas, would you like to take that question?
This is just unbelievable, this line of question is coming up, we do have that data, if you want it, but it's never been part of the budget process, so if you want to know the update or the breakdown on overtime, Greg will give you all three hundred thousand dollars of his overtime in an update, line by line, it's not like we don't have that, you've never been interested in that before.
It's in the monthly report, too.
Right, and, and that's where we stray on going through the budget when we start
deep diving into every line item.
Put it in the monthly report if you can, he, he says it's in the month, I've never seen it.
I've never seen it.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not, well, it's not just Greg, I mean, he just mentioned, yeah.
Irrelevant to this topic, but future item.
For all departments.
All right, the information's there, it'll get to you, next.
Plant maintenance is closed, nothing to talk about, storm sewer, same deal, capital, this is the new division that took the place of the capital project fund, so again, this number is what was discussed on January 9th, it just went from its own fund into here, again, it's more efficient from an accounting and also ultimately a presentation standpoint.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, in this project, was this what the mayor was going to, the plant, plant maintenance for six ninety? Is that for the, putting money aside for?
Mr. Wilson?
No, that was the projects that were programmed in the CIP for this year, dealing with plant maintenance. So the setting money aside for the south plant, again, would, would be, again, if we wanted to budget in here, just to show it and then not spend it, but it would be the same net effect as just restricting it through fund balance at the end of the year.
Next?
Sure, the SURF fund? Sure, the SURF fund, again, you can see the schedule for the SURF fund beginning on page 124. And obviously, as we've always done, these purchases come back to the council for final approval before they get made. But that's the, what's programmed as of right now to be replaced for this year, and the funding thereof. So unless there's, I guess, a question on the, the schedule, I don't really have anything else on, on the SURF fund.
Thank you, next.
Sure, police pension fund. Alderman Wesley.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you have a question down there, no?
Yes, I do.
Okay, moving on.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So my question with the state taking over the pensions, are we having a say-so in the pensions on what money and, because if you tell me you need a million dollars for the pension, or the guy comes and says you gotta put so much money away for pension. So if the state going to have control of the pension, do we have a say in that pension anymore, or they invest the money wherever they want?
Chief Festa, would you like to handle that question?
So with the state law that passed just last year, within two years, the state will be taking over all of our pension funds. Right now, our investment expense for that, out of a $28 million fund, was about $75,000 a year, so about .26 basis points, but the state feels that's too much, I guess. So they're gonna take it over and they're confident they can do a better job investing than the local funds can. So that kind of remains to be seen if they do.
So. Alderman Wesley, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, my, my question is, i- if the state's going to control these pensions and, and and watching what's going down on the state down there, all I can see is we going to have our pension fund at this level eventually. And the downstate pensions are gonna be short, short money in the smaller towns, that money, our money is going to go down, downstate to bring their pension funds in play. That's a drawback I have with the pension, I'm just saying, Mayor, I'm, I'm just.
Chief, do you want to address all that?
Sure, so they have assured us that they're going to separate the funds and based upon the overall performance, you'll be reallocated to your fund and that we will supposedly not have to subsidize poor performing funds in the past, because our city council has actually been supportive and funded it at a level that was requested by the actuary every year. Many towns have not, but they've assured us that that's not gonna happen, but if I told you I believed them, I'd be lying, so.
I was gonna say, get some swamp land for CL2 if I believe them.
But that's, that's going to be out of our hands.
Mayor Police.
Yeah, it's, believe me, when we were discussing this at DMMC to, you know, to get behind and whatnot, a lot of the questions were, can they sweep the funds? They said, no, then they're not gonna sweep the police pensions. This is supposed to work like IMRF supposedly, and basically no commingling of funds, so our funds are not with ITASKAS and Bensonvilles. There's a separate account for us, is the way it was explained. And the fees should be similar to IMRF, which are lower than what we're paying here supposedly. There's a initial cost upfront and then it switches or whatever. And again, I'm waiting to hear when all that happens, Brad will keep us updated, I'm sure.
And the state tax was only gonna be temporary?
Right, right, oh yeah, no, no, I, I, believe me, I should, please.
Okay, I think we covered that then, right, unless there's any other questions?
Special servicerie fund, right now, this is just a debt service fund, we get property tax money in, we pay debt service out.
Sounds good, next.
Thank you.
That's it. I'll make a motion to approve the budget as amended. Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. That passes, uh, let's see, so next items to be considered at future meetings? There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Peace be with you.